Very good.
I'm gonna jump into my meeting minutes.
All right, very good. I'll keep watching here.
Zach, Zach just.
Yeah, I just let him in.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, just watching my timer down there. Okay, it's seven o'clock. This is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting. And our first case is 2206 Schulenberg, 15 Old Payne Hollow Road, map 29 parcel 450. 450, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.1.5b to demolish the existing deck and build a new four season room with an attached deck within the side setback. This is continued from our last meeting and the board at that time was Mick, Will, Trevor, Manny and Rita and I will let that board stand again. So Mr. Schulenberg, is there more you would like to present to the board?
Hi, I'm John Rogalski. I'm actually representing Frederick.
Sure.
Um, I submitted all the the blueprints and we did submit the new civil plans. So um, I think we have all the information we need in to make our application.
Okay, um, is there anyone from the audience who wants to speak to this particular application? And Chris, I believe there was one letter.
Yes, I believe I forwarded it to you. It was signed. I don't know their name offhand. I don't have it with me, but it was a signed letter supporting the project.
Right, and I think that was from the neighbor. I don't seem to.
Yes, we have a letter from Ray and Maureen. I think it's shortly. And they are the adjacent neighbors and they said they'd have no problem with the project received.
Okay. Okay, I think that's the only letter, right, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so then I will go to the board and I will start with you Manny. And you're muted.
There we go.
I don't see where this is a detriment to the area. It seems like there's only one area where they could expand because the septic is on the other side, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll wait, I'll wait for the board for some more. See what the rest of the board has to say.
Sure, that's fine. Mick?
Yeah, I'm okay with this. It's the only place I could see it doing it. The neighbors don't have a problem, so it's good with me.
Okay, Will?
I agree with Mick.
Al?
No, no issues at all.
Andy?
Well, I don't have any either.
And Jan?
No, I hate seeing something get this close to the setback, but the neighbors, the next, you know, adjacent neighbors don't care, so, okay.
Okay, Trevor, you're muted, okay.
Yeah, I'm in a noisy household. Um, it is, I agree with Jan, it is getting, it's getting quite close to the setback, but the neighbor doesn't seem to mind. And when you go out on the site there, the neighbor's house is quite far from that property line, so I don't. I don't see what, what, what the harm would be.
Thank you. And Rita?
I agree with the comments that have been.
And Manny, did you have anything further?
No, I'm all set with it, thank you.
Yeah, and I have the same feeling that is getting close to the setback, but on the other hand, it is, there are trees, there is quite a lot of property in between. This and the neighbor who was affected is, is not particularly.
Madam Chairman, could we just ask Rita to turn her volume up? She's very, Rita, you're very difficult to hear.
Okay. Turn up and, and lean into the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, that's better. Thank you. So, all right, then I need a motion to go to findings.
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so it was Manny moved and Will seconded, Chris.
Mick.
And, and this, these findings I am indebted to Will for. 2206 Frederick H. Schulenberg, 15 Old Payne Hollow Road, map 29 parcel 450, request for a special permit to permit construction of four season room with attached deck. One, the applicant owns a single family residential house situated in the R30 district and proposes to remove the existing deck and construct a four season room 18 feet by 20 feet with an attached deck 20 by 20 feet, hereinafter referred to as the additional living space. The existing house and deck currently conform to the front setback bylaw, but is nonconforming in regard to the side setback in that the existing deck is 16 feet, 16.5 feet from the sideline where 25 feet is required under current bylaw. The additional living space to be constructed is to be constructed within 7.1 feet from the easterly side of sideline of the property. There were no appearances and one letter in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. There were no objections from abutters. The applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws are 5.4.2, section 6.1.5.1b and section 8.4.2. Section 6.1.5.1b, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Section 8.4.2, the board finds that the benefits derived from the construction of the additional living space outweigh any adverse effects from said construction. Section 8.4.2.1, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses which would not be damaged by the construction of the additional living space. B, the board finds that the road's drainage and other public utilities would not be affected by the construction of the additional living space. C, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space will not contribute to environmental damage. And section 8.4.2.2 is not applicable. Section 8.4.2.3, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. That's what I got.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to move the findings.
Okay, Mick has made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Manny, seconds, all in favor it is. Will?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Rita?
Aye.
All right, and having said that, we need a motion to grant the special permit.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
I need a second. Okay, all in favor. Mick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Rita?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, all right. You're done, sir, we will.
Thank you. I appreciate all your time.
We, you can work with Chris on getting the paperwork and things like that.
Sounds great. Thank you again.
Oh, good.
All right, moving on. Uh, 22-07B, Wellfleet Historical Society and Museum, 300 Main Street, map 46/1, request for a special permit to request permission to place a sign on the pergola located at the base of the stairs in the parking lot of Town Hall. And I'm not sure who's speaking for the historical society.
Uh, I can. Eric Winslow, Vice President of the Society.
Okay, hello there, Mr. Winslow.
Just to give you a little history. Last.
Wait, I, wait a minute, let me set the board. Wait a minute, I forgot to set the board. The board will be myself. Will, Manny, Trevor and Mick. Yeah, okay, now, now you can go.
Okay. Last year, the Board of Selectmen approved our giving of a stairway to the town that provides access to the backside of the historical society property. A plan was presented to them and the plan included a sign located on the pergola at the base of the stairs, so we're we brought this to the building inspector and he wasn't quite sure how to handle it, but he considered it an off premise sign and he said we should run it past the zoning board to see if they had any concerns about it or wanted to comment on it. So that's where we are and I can answer questions about the sign itself or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Will?
Me?
Yeah.
I, I guess it is an off premises sign, but I think it's since it's been directed by the the Board of Selectmen are fine with it being on town, town property. I have, I have no problem with it at all. I think under 7.3.2 you could stretch it a bit and find that it, it, it is specifically permitted under the R, R sign bylaw.
Thank you. All right, Trevor?
I, I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Dan?
Did you say Jan?
Yeah, I did, yes.
Okay, um. It's a great sign. I'm just curious. Legally, how are we involved when it's the building inspector? We're not mentioned at all in the sign bylaw. How are we involved?
Very good question.
I've got an answer.
Good.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we, we give it a special permit. Someone wants our opinion, we can give them our, our opinion and it's fine and we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think.
You're, you're correct, Jan. We, we don't specifically have, have a role, but someone's asked our opinion. I'll give it.
Well, they're actually asking for a special permit and I don't know how, under what criteria we would give them a special permit.
We can't.
Right.
Uh, I can jump in here with a bit of information. Sign in general, if we remember the last time that we had a four R in town over a sign, the sign was actually arrested and put in the police station. What's happening here is people are just crossing their Ts and dotting their Is.
Yes.
And we can give an opinion and my opinion is I'm fine with the sign, but we don't need to actually grant a special permit on it. But they're really just being cautious. That's where it stands from.
Yeah, Amy?
Hi, my name is Amy Roberts and I own the property at 15 Harding Lane where the staircase ends at the top. And I don't actually have a problem with the sign. I'm more concerned about in 2018 when I bought the property, I had to go through the town to get an easement for the septic that was there. In the process of, I, I never, I never was notified of the potential building in the process of building. Eric and I have talked because there was a footing put through the septic pit that's still there. And the, the staircase comes right by the corner bound. So I, I just, I'm not sure what, there's no privacy. It's right by the staircase. I just don't know what my liability is. I had to take out a special liability when I got the easement. And I also have been mowing it since I purchased the property because I was told I needed to maintain it. And so now I don't know where that leaves me.
Yeah. Very good question. I'm sure that, you know, nobody on this board is capable of answering it because it's probably a town question for the town lawyers. But I do hear that. Manny?
The issue for us is a sign, right? It's not anything else.
No, we don't have anything to do with the stairs.
Right.
The stairs have been built by someone else's authority. I, we don't have anything to do with those. And I agree, I knew, I, I also remember Mick that we did, we did deal with the town sign once before and yes, had to arrest it and put it in the police station. I don't know whatever happened to that sign. But it was enormous and, and we turned it down. So somehow or other, we do have some role in signs because this was, that one was brought to us for denial.
Correct.
Yep, so Manny?
I don't have any problem with the sign myself. I think the building inspector should take care of that. And any other problem that, you know, exists with the stairs. That's it.
Yeah. Al?
Great idea. No problem with the sign.
Andy?
Good idea, problem.
Yeah.
I disagree with Will. But I don't think, first of all, I don't think it's our issue. However, I do believe that 7.3.2 does not impact 7.7.6 because the sign is not being erected by the town, the state or the federal government. I have no problem with the sign, by the way. However, I'm just thinking, telling you that in my mind is a legal matter. The fact that the select board has no problem with it doesn't mean that they, we have, they, we, the Town of Wellfleet has erected it and therefore whatever, where is it? 7.7.6 off premises signs are prohibited. To the extent that off premises means not on the property, which is what I understand it to be. But what, again, we, we will never know from the drafters of this bylaw, which was not me when I was on the planning. But anyway, it's long-winded to say I don't think we have any role in this. I don't know. If the select board is fine with it, I'm fine with it, but it's a legal matter. I don't know how you get around 7.7.6 unless the town says we will whatever it says here is 7.3 point, we will erect this sign. Is that what the select board said? That's probably what they ought to say. Is that what they said? Does anyone know?
Eric, is that what they said?
It, it wasn't discussed in those terms about who was going to erect it. And we, we just said, we were, we showed them the plan, we showed them the location of the sign and said, this is what we're going to do. And that was what was approved.
Yeah. Again, I have no problem with.
Yeah, and, and when, when was that select board meeting where they approved it, by the way?
I think in August.
August of 2021?
Yes, it was. It took about, it was over a year because of COVID and everything else before, from our first presentation to them before they approved it. And just to say with the building department, they weren't sure we needed a special permit, but thought we should just apply for one in case that was what was needed. So that's why we're here.
Right, right. Rita, well, I haven't let Rita weigh in and then I'll get to you. Rita?
It's a little bit confusing to me. I like the sign. But whether or not, you know, I don't, and there also seem to be some issues with Ms. Parkinson also with the stairs and all of that. I'm not sure about that.
So Will, you wanted to.
Yeah, Andy said, how do we get around 7.7.6? I just say we simply ignore it.
Well, I mean, the fact is that we, that I don't know how you grant a special permit to someone.
No, 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 we're not. I think we're just making a declaration.
Oh, we can ignore it.
We don't have any, any objection to it. It's not worth a nickel, but they asked for it. Do we have an objection? No.
All right, I'm not, I'll let, I'll let you have the last word.
Let me, let me, let me read you what Town Council sent me when I said, why is this in front of me and do we have any, any say in this? What Town Council said to me was that pursuant to 7.3.2, signs erected by the municipal, county, state or federal government as may be deemed necessary for their respective functions are exempted from the provisions of the sign bylaw. As the sign is being erected for the purpose of directing traffic on town property, the board may grant permission to erect the sign.
Whoa.
That's what I got.
We need new Town Council.
But notice I said permission. I mean, it didn't say special permit. It just, as, as Will says, it's, we don't have any objection.
Yeah, then there's no special permit needed.
No.
Whatever they're asking for. Yeah, they're asking for a special permit.
Yeah, so.
We have, have we heard from Trevor?
Yeah, we heard from Trevor. He didn't have a problem with that. But he could, he was, he has the ability to weigh back in if he'd like to. Yes, Trevor?
You're muted. I, I still have no problem with it.
So.
We should just.
Sharon, 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 do you have a motion on this?
I, yes, let me read you my, my, my motion. And I've got it in the sense of findings and so there, this is a request under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 7.7.6 to place an off premise sign on the pergola located at the base of the stairs in the parking lot of Town Hall. The stairs and sign are on town property. The sign is arch shaped and measures eight square feet. The Historical Society has donated the stairs to the town. The Select Board approved the location of the stairs and sign at their meeting in August 2020. Pursuant to section 7.3.2 of the zoning bylaws, signs erected by the municipal, county, municipal, county, state or federal government as may be deemed necessary for their respective functions are exempted from the provisions of the sign bylaw. As the sign is being erected for the purpose of directing traffic on town property, I move that the board register no objection to the sign.
Sharon, did I, did I hear you right that you made a reference early on to section 7.7.6?
Yep.
Why don't you, my, my suggestion is just remove that sentence.
Okay, okay, why don't I just say, this is a request to place.
Since we're choosing to ignore it, probably shouldn't be in our findings.
Right. Okay, the, so we could say a request to place.
There you go.
All right, so therefore I move that the board register no objection to the sign.
Yeah. I vote in, in favor.
I need a second for it. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so then I need to go to all in favor. Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
And myself. Aye, okay, so I assume that, you know, I will send this to Chris. She will have it for the building inspector and and Mr. Winslow, I think that should probably take care of it if, you know, if it turns out that we don't have jurisdiction, then I don't know what happens, but.
Okay, well, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So now we all go to 1912 Amendment Old Bank LLC, 10 Main Street, map 15 parcel 1, remove condition one to change hours of operation and remove five, and five, to remove the requirement of an annual report of operations to the board and other town officials. And the board with it for this one will be Will, Trevor, Mick, Manny and Al. Okay. Mr. Mint? You are muted.
No, please.
You are again muted.
Some volumes.
I'm sorry, either you've got volume problems or something.
There you go.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
Knowledge can be tricky.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
We wanted to move to the next. Here we can let Zach figure out his technological issues there.
Guys, I'm, I'm, I'm here now.
Okay, okay, good.
So the problem is I have no speaker on my computer, so I'm using my phone and I thought I could dial in. So now I'm on the meeting in two places. So audio will come from one and video from the other.
Sure.
All right, my apologies.
So.
You're muted again, Zach.
No, he's, he's muted on that one because he's going to come through the, the phone for, for volume. You see two Zacks.
I'm sorry, it's my computer. My, I need a new computer.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so. So the floor is yours.
Okay, so um, I would like, I feel that I would like to remove these conditions of the special permit. We'd like to have some flexibility in when we can have our hours and, and to the second condition that we're asking to be removed, we just think it's redundant. We have other reports and we noticed that other similar businesses don't have that requirement. So we thought that it would be okay to remove that one as well, if it's okay with you.
I'm gonna start with Mick.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem. I'm just curious, what are your new opening hours going to be, Zach?
Uh, right now, we're happy with the hours that we have now, but we think that maybe in the high season, um, it might be wise to open a little earlier in case people want to make it to the beaches before the parking lots fill up.
And are you still going to close at the same time?
Right now, the plan is to close around eight. We tend to get slow around then. I don't want to cause a commotion, but there is, we would like the flexibility to set our hours like any other retail and I believe you may have mistakenly granted that to another competitor of mine.
Um, let me, let me just clarify that, that we did not, that no one, no one has hours later. The hours that we've granted to all of the others are eight to eight. And we have not removed condition five from any special permit. They're on all the permits.
May I?
Just so you, just so you know that that is, I did do that, that research before so that we, we have this.
May I share my screen? And show you the, the amendment to the special permit?
The, for your special permit?
No, for the competitor.
I've, no, I don't think we need to see that. I've, I've looked them up today.
Okay.
That's what we, that's what we've granted. That, that is what we have granted on the special permits. They've all been exactly the same for, not for other retails, but for all, for all three marijuana dealers in this town.
It votes the board approved the removal of condition one, allows the applicant the flexibility to establish hours. So it does stay between the hours of eight and eight.
Between eight and eight. Yeah, that's.
But it, but it also says it removes the condition one.
Their condition on that one was that they, they couldn't open until noon on Sundays and they couldn't open before 10:00. So we moved it to eight to eight, which is the same as what is in the resident, in the bylaw for the residential one. For the medical marijuana, eight to eight.
Okay, on again, I, I, with all I'm not sure what to say, but the special permits that this business and the competing businesses have isn't under that section of the bylaw. So and I'm.
Yeah, I know, I know that.
I like the, I like the playing field to be, to be even. I don't want to be open later than 8 p.m. But my, I'm deeply concerned that that's not what they're going to do. And I don't want to be held to a different standard. That's not what they're gonna do, and I don't want to be held to a different standard.
Well.
Uh, I have no objection. I mean, right up the street is, um. The wicked, hope, hope, hopefully the well, there might be a, uh, fox and crow might move in and there's. The wicked has no restrictions on their hours. They're, they're open rather early. Um, and so I, I think the requests are, yeah, I, 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 I agree that, uh. We don't tend to tell, uh. Businesses in the commercial zone when they shouldn't, shouldn't open, so. Uh, I have no objection to, to, to these requests.
Okay, Rita.
And I don't have any objection either.
Okay, Jan.
I think we do set hours, don't we? For retail, I mean, no one can be open at midnight. I mean, don't we set hours for everybody that comes for a special permit?
Yes.
I believe so.
Yes, we do.
I. I understand Zach's position. I just don't think we can be, you know, you can be open anytime you want, that.
I don't even, I don't even wanna be. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking out of turn. I'll let you continue.
But if we remove, if we remove, completely remove. Uh, this, this, um. Condition, you can do whatever you want. I mean, and we don't, we don't let people do that. Businesses, I mean, not people, businesses.
Good.
Okay.
Nor should you.
Okay. Andy.
Well, I agree with Zach that all marijuana retailers should be treated, uh. Similarly, in terms of hours. I don't necessarily agree with that. Will and I are not getting along tonight. His analogy, the restaurants is not the proper analogy. The proper analogy in my mind would be. The retail establishments that sell alcohol. I don't know we, that we're necessarily involved in setting our hours. I thought the state was. I don't really know, but I know that, I believe that, and maybe I'm wrong. Feel free to tell me. That, uh, there are certain hours that are just set in stone, so I don't know, does the, uh. What's it called? The CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission? Do they have a, have anything with respect to, uh, when, when you can open? And when you, when you have to, when you have to close? Zach, maybe you know.
I could look it up very quickly while, while you're, I can have an answer in a minute.
Uh, Andy, may I incre- infringe on your time and space?
Yes, but let me finish.
Okay.
You wanna, well, if you wanna jump in on that, because I wanted to talk about the other.
Well, I just wanna say the alcohol hours are set by the, uh, by the state alcohol.
ABC, yeah.
I'm pretty sure, so that, 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 that's nothing that the town, the town sets forth. And, and, and this, you know, and I, and i- if we have regulate, regular weighted hours, I'm not sure I'm. Happy with that in a, in a, a, a commercial zone. Hours are regulated so you don't disturb the neighbors and the like, and most of the neigh, the neighbors here are. In a, 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 a commercial zone. And in terms of noise and what, this, this a property of butch route six. You'll have a thousand times more noise from route six than, than you have from, from, from this pot shop.
No, I know where it is. And the other. The reporting, I don't know. I'm not, I just get, don't know enough about the reporting that Zach has to make to. Town officials. And. Why that? I don't, I'd like to know more about what that entails. So I will, uh, I will stop there.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, we'll get those questions for Zach while he continues to, to search.
I do have the answer. Uh, just because I have the, uh, PMR in front of me for. It's these, and so, um, the hours, it says unless otherwise explicitly authorized by the municipality. Sales shall only occur between the hours of eight AM and nine PM. And again, I have no desire to be open past date. I don't, there's no business reason. I just never like to have a restriction if I don't have to. And, and my, and on my reading of. The amendment to the Cape Cod cannabis special permit was the removal of that.
Well, but you do have restricted by the Cape Cod cannabis. I'm sort of saying the cannabis control.
The cannabis control submission, it says unless you explicitly say otherwise, it's eight AM to nine PM.
Right.
So, okay.
Other question, Madam Chairperson, if I may. Uh, it's directed to Zach. Zach, you, you wanna open for me date? Are you can, are your competitors just open later or something that you're here to? Level the playing field, so to speak?
Can't be open. No, but they, oh, sorry, through chair if I can respond. No, but. I would assume that they could just take that step without having to come to the board at this point, based on. My reading, and I think their, I think their reading of their.
I wrote that condition. That, that's why I'm having trouble with this. I wrote that condition and we changed it to eight to eight. That's the condition I submitted. When we, when they asked to change their hours, I wrote, I changed the hours to eight to eight.
So that will be the answer to my question, that if somebody opened later than eight during violation of the permit.
Right, if they're opening in, in, later than eight, they're in violation of the permit of the amendment that we gave.
Because I, I have no problem with being eight to eight, Zach.
Well, in that case, me neither. I just. I, I wish I could show you on the screen because it says the removal of condition one.
But it was substituted with a different condition.
Okay, well, I hope so. I mean, that's fine. I'm not a lawyer. That's, that's okay.
Does that?
I don't.
Your question, Zach?
Yeah. As long as it's the same wording, then that's fine with me. I'd like, you know, just want it to be equal, that's all. Again, I really honestly have no intention of being open later. I don't think there's a business case for it at the moment.
I don't think I've heard from Trevor.
Uh, no, I, I, I have no problem with, with it. I mean, it sounds like. You know, even if we, addition, they're still, they're still gonna be held to eight to nine by the state. Um, and I, I can't remember. When we did the, the one in South Wellfleet, if we, we removed it, if we, if we then amended it within eight to eight, or if we just removed it. As Zach is saying, I, I don't, I don't recall. And as far as the reporting goes, I don't, I don't think I understand that one enough to weigh in on it.
Can Zach, can Zach, uh, respond on that?
On the reporting?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I just don't know if this board wants that responsibility and it is, if it's being asked of the other. Shops and why they would want that. We have to do a report to the select board and we're subject to audit by the town. In order for them to collect the fee that's associated with the host community agreement. But I'm not exactly sure why, I mean, the report had things like, um. Letting you know who the key holders are and things like that. And I'm just not sure that that was even, that may have been boilerplate and not fully thought, thought through. By the board at the time, having, you know, not seen how these operations work.
Was that report supposed to come to us? Are we the board that referenced in that report?
Yeah.
Because, uh, because, I mean, we don't get reports from any other business, whether it's any other marijuana business or any other business in general.
To Zach's point, I think that, that was boilerplate.
Yeah.
It is in all three special permits. I don't think this board has any interest in getting a report from, from Zach or. Or his competitors, um, nor have we ever enforced any such thing. Um, and I don't, you know, the only problem I, my, my only sticking point with removing that condition is. The other town officials, because I didn't want to take away something other town officials might want, but we certainly don't want it.
If I may, the, the host, the host community agreement has another report and requires that we meet weekly with the police department.
Right.
Uh, sorry, not weekly, annually with the police department, um, which I think is. You know, appropriate, but I just didn't think that we wanted to write the report or that you wanted to read the report every year.
I don't think I've heard from Al yet either.
Um, have we gotten any letters on this from anyone?
No, not that I know of. Chris? Chris, has anyone, and weighed in on this?
No, 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 nothing from the public.
Okay, then, you know, I, I mean, my position is we should be, um. Treating all three establishments the same, so if, uh, the other two establishments, uh, have. That condition, you know, the eight to eight condition, we ought to maintain it. Otherwise, if, if they have different hours, we ought to let Zach have whatever hours he wants. Um, and on the, on the, uh, reporting requirement. Uh, my, my. Suggestion is if, if the other two places have that requirement, Zach should have it as well. If they don't, we should eliminate it.
What else?
I agree with it.
Me too.
Dan has her hand up.
Yeah, yes, there you are.
Madam Chairman, through you to Zach. Zach, do you have to report change of, um, says management staff and individual, individuals with key access? Are you required to report that to the select board or anybody else through any other agreement?
Uh, not that I know of, no. This, the, the select board report has more to do with, uh, you know, our income and, and so on, and then the police get to, you know. Ask about our, review our security plan, so that would be part of that.
I guess I'm just asking because, and I, I just don't know the answer, but I, I do believe a number, probably last year, a different. We, uh, marijuana retail group did come before us to, to tell us there was a change in management. I don't know if that's a requirement by the state. I, I just don't know where this came from. I mean, town council wrote these findings, I believe. I don't know where it came from.
If I may.
Sure.
So I, I think that that, that was an amendment to the special permit at the store next to Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes.
And that was a change of ownership, so. Um, when they talk about management, it's, are they talking about like the, you know, the management who owns the company? Or like who I hire as a manager on the floor, just a retail manager? So I think that, uh, this is just kind of two, same word for two very different things. Does that make sense?
Thanks.
I guess, uh, my question to that would be then, I mean. Is there any other place where you would have to come if you wanted to report? Anybody else who would call forward if you were changing ownership?
Yes, the select, well, the select board and, and I believe, I don't. It, would that remove that? I don't think that would remove that condition of the special permit. I think change of ownership would still be something. You would have to approve. I don't, this is just about who holds a key. Um, and who has the password to the alarm system.
The, the change in ownership line is in the same condition.
Oh.
It says any change in ownership of the property or change in management staff and individual with key access. I, I certainly hear you on the management staff and individual with key access, but I don't know that there's any other place where it says that about. Change in ownership of the property.
Okay, and then from my understanding of the select board is that they did not, you know, they, nobody in Wellfleet. Opposed the change of ownership, so I don't know whether that's, has any teeth anymore either.
No, but they did come before us for, to change the special permit.
Right, so.
Yeah.
You know, the original intent was it would be stopped and it hasn't been. So what, you know, my question is sort of why have it, but.
But, no, we, we actually got a proposal and, and approved them to change ownership. I mean. I, I don't know why. I don't really know that, I not think that in this case that we're necessarily looking for more business. But that is what happened in that one. I don't. I'm open to discussion about why that is and if we need it.
Sharon, yeah, Sharon?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's a ridiculous provision. We, we don't have any standards. How am I supposed to judge whether the ownership should be? A, 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 or B? Might as well throw a dart at, at, at a dartboard. Talk about getting sued and rightly so. We shouldn't have any jurisdiction over that sort of thing. What, what, what's our basis? You know, and there's no, nothing i- in the ordinance, I mean. Uh, and, and to Al's point about everyone should be treated the same, well, we, we, we'd have to den- deny this application. In terms of that, because the other two, uh, operators aren't here. It, it, it's only Zach that's, that's here.
No, but under, under what conditions do they operate currently? That's all I'm saying.
Well, they probably have the same, the same provision about showing their book.
Exactly.
But how are we, what are we gonna do with that information? What positive thing can come out for the zoning board of appeals? To get that information and do something intelligent with it? I'd say it's zero. It's, it's a ridiculous provision. Shouldn't have been there in the first place.
Jan?
Just, I agree with that report. I don't know why we would get that report. I, I'm just thinking. For a restaurant with an liquor license. I'm pretty sure they have to come before the select board when they change management. And I'm wondering, are we supposed to be taking on that responsibility for marijuana establishments? I just don't know. I don't know why this was put in there.
Yeah.
I'm happy to give my opinion. I, I think I do know where it came from. Most, most towns in the municipal, in, in Massachusetts, most municipalities in Massachusetts. Put that provision in because they wanted to have. Control over who came into their town or who, you know. Um, took over these host rooms. They were trying to, they were trying to select people based on their competency, character. And since then. That's been thrown out by many lawsuits and. Uh, cases where they can't really fairly de- determine that, because it's very subjective.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't know that. First of all, I don't know how, how onerous this, this second condition is. Uh, to, to Mr. Mint. And, uh. I would also, before I would, I'm not on this panel, but before I were, were to vote. I would actually want some guidance here in town council on that. On the other. You can go around, go around the table before.
Okay, um. So. Uh, let me, let me do it, try it this way. Let's go around on the subject of hours. I'll start over there with Trevor.
Okay, I, I have no, no particular problem with. Removing the condition of the hours. I just think that we should treat all of these businesses the same, so if we. If we did, when, when the South Wellfleet one came before us, if we remove the hours, but then. Reconditioned it as eight to eight, then I think we should do the same thing.
I can tell you that that is in fact what we did and that I looked up the permit today. To reread it, so what we did was we took away that restriction that they couldn't open till ten. And that they couldn't op- open until noon on Sundays and then said, oh, you can be open between eight and eight and you can make your own decisions.
Then I would propose that we change. That we amend number, condition number one to, to be. Eight to eight.
Okay, I'm going, okay. Rita, your feeling about hours?
I agree with, uh, Trevor that should, that should be the same for all of these.
Jan?
Uh, I agree with Trevor as well.
Mick?
I agree with Trevor.
Okay, Manny?
The same.
Okay, and Will?
Me too.
Okay, Al? And Andy?
I agree.
Okay, so that's the, the issue on the, um, on that amendment. Um, now on the second. Now, on the second one, Andy has proposed that that one we, we need further guidance on. I'd like other opinions on that.
I agree.
Manny agrees. Will?
I strongly disagree. Strongly, every, well, that's all I did. I, I won't go into it again. It, it's ridiculous that we have to listen. We have no basis of, of, of judging. It's ridiculous. Anyway.
Okay, Mick?
Um, I'm sort of on the fence. It's, uh, my question towards Zach, through you, Madam Chairperson. Is this a big hassle right now, Zach, on number five? Is it putting you on a, a big, do you have to do a lot of paperwork? Or are you okay with us getting in?
No, it's, it's like, it's slightly onerous and I honestly didn't think you'd want to be receiving it. Because every time I give someone a key because they're, um, got promoted to management, you need to get a report.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's overreach. While I don't agree wholeheartedly, but Will, I do agree with the premise of it.
But if you, but if you say now that, that the board would like that, that's no problem.
Yeah, I just don't want to see, and we, we sorted out the eighty-eight, but I don't want to see you being at a disadvantage where the, if the other business don't have to do it, then I don't see why you should.
And I sort of thought that, you know, I, I didn't intend to make this about change of ownership, but I'm happy to come to you if that, that, don't, that, don't see that happening. But, uh, you know, even, even in that case, I was, I'm surprised that you'd like to keep it because you allowed the other change of ownership without much research. I don't know what, I don't know what the criteria that to deny a change of ownership would be. I just don't know. To Will's point.
I suspect that the only reason for that was that it allowed it to be aired in a public hearing.
Condition of the, of the host agreement.
Yeah, and that would be fine.
Sharon, it won't, it won't be aired anywhere. Let's say we, just think about it, think about it. How ridiculous is it? If we got this information, what would we, we can't discuss it. So we would have to, on, on our own, we would have to file a petition ourselves to hear ourselves, notify the abutters, and to, to what? Right? There's no mechanism for us to do it. We closed the case. Otherwise, we say, you know what? We're going to keep this on the, the agenda for as long as this pot shop is open. You know, it's, it's absurd.
I, I actually agree with you. I, I don't see the point of, of this condition five either.
It's so ridiculous. I can't believe we're wasting our time.
And, but the question, and, and all I, all I will tell you is, and I don't have any problem with this, is that, you know, if we, if we lift this condition, we will get applications from the other two to also lift this condition. But I'm fine with that because I don't have a problem. But we, we will still have to hear them. Just understand, they will be back to tell us, but you took it, you didn't make Zach do it. So now we don't want to have to do it either. But I agree with you. I don't know what we would do with the information either.
Just to be clear. Are you saying that the other marijuana retailers don't have to provide an annual report? Or that they do have to provide, provide an annual report, but they don't have to report change in ownership or staff or individuals?
Every, every special permit we have given has condition five in it. They all three have this, have this. This is why we heard the change in ownership back, you know, whenever that was. They all have that condition. It was boilerplate. It was put in all three applications and so far no one has asked to take it out. So they all have it.
But I'm sure, at, at some point, can I just give a little background on why I'm making these requests and, and a little defense of the? I, I mean, I watched your, the other hearings of the other, of the other, of the other, my competitors, right? And, and they removed, you know, I had the full support of the community, um, of my neighbors for my special permit, for everything in my special permit. And, um, both other competitors had a lot of opposition. And the conditions of the special permit were a compromise between the neighbors who had legitimate concerns about their neighborhood and those stores. So I don't think that we're all equal. We're all in different neighborhoods. And, um, and even this, even the amendment to the hours was opposed by the neighbors of Cape Cod Cannabis. My neighbors, I have an excellent relationship and it's one of the conditions of my host agreement that we have ongoing communication and relationships with our neighbors. And I don't think my competitors are uh, in compliance with that condition of their host agreements. So I think it's very different. And I think that I should be treated differently because of that.
And in fact, you were because
But I believe.
You, you do remember that the others had many more conditions than you did.
But they were removed. So when they had a condition.
They, they have now been removed, yes.
Right. So I'm just, you know, so I, I didn't think that this, that this request would be met with any opposition at all based on the, how many conditions were removed over the objections of the neighbors of the last person, the last company to come to you.
So I think I was going around on the, on, on five. Trevor, did you, did I weigh in with you on five?
No, I don't think so. It says condition two of the paperwork, not five.
Yeah, I know, but, but it is five.
It is five?
It is five, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I have no.
It says five at the top and then down there it says two.
I'm fine with getting rid of it.
Manny?
Well, I thought if the other two ha- has it, uh, how can we remove it from Zach? But like Zach said, his place is a whole different, um, it's a whole different thing. So I would vote in favor of, uh, removing number five.
Mick?
Yeah, I, I would vote in favor of removing number five. And then if the other two think that's unfair, they can come back to us again and we can go through the whole process over again. But I do want to remind the board that when this whole thing started, it was a brave new world with marijuana legislation. And Zach was the first business that came in front of the board. And they did a phenomenal job from day one from security. They answered everybody's concerns in the community. And they went above and beyond in what they should. And I'm not in favor of or for or against pot, doesn't matter to me. But they, they did a fabulous job within the community and they played by the rules the whole way through. So I'm in favor of getting rid of number five and not putting an unfair burden on the, the good business model in this town.
Who have I not heard from on the amendment? Al?
Perhaps me.
On five?
Right, I, I, I would just say that, I, I don't think anyone really knows on the zoning board why we have this condition, what, why it was put in in the first place. So if it's just bureaucratic paperwork, let's get rid of it. I, I, I see that now. I mean, I see Will's point. If, if we don't want to read it, why should anyone take any time to, you know, write it? So let's just, and we should get rid of it for all, all, all the others as well.
They have to come and ask.
They have to come and ask, right. But, but we can also vote in this case to get rid of it and then, you know, whoever's monitoring this, they can come and ask.
Are you ready for findings?
I'll move to findings.
And I have to, do I have to, do I have to poll the board on findings, Trevor? On going to findings?
I don't know. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't.
Can I make one more request?
Yes.
This might be asking too much and it's fine if it is, but can you just make, can I just ask that if the conditions aren't, if condition one is not going to be removed on hours, then I get the exact same wording as the previous applicant?
I think it, I think I have written the same wording.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask who did the second and the motion? I don't have.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who it was.
I'll do it.
All right, Will.
All right, well, thanks.
Okay, well, all right. So, um, nineteen twelve amendment, Zachary Mintford, The Old Bank LLC, ten Main Street, map fifteen parcel one. This is an application to amend special permit nineteen twenty. The applicant wishes to remove condition one of the special permit. Condition states that the adult use marijuana establishment shall be permitted to operate between the hours of ten AM and eight PM for adult use marijuana retail purposes, provided that any customers in line at eight PM are able to be served, but no new customers will be admitted after eight PM. The board amends this, um, condition to read, the adult use marijuana establishment shall be permitted to operate between the hours of eight AM and eight PM for adult use marijuana retail purposes. Now, the applicant wishes to remove condition five of the special permit, which reads, the applicant shall provide an annual report of its operations to the board and other town officials no later than January thirty first of each year, including a copy of all current state licenses and demonstrating continued compliance with the conditions of this special permit. Any change in ownership of the property or change in the management staff and individual with key access to the marijuana establishment shall be reported within thirty days of such change. The board agrees to remove this condition.
Are, are we taking two votes or just one?
I think we probably have to take two. Because we took two on the, on the others. We took separate votes on the others, so.
Statement, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was listening carefully to what your was and it stated, I report to our board as well, as well as other town officials.
Right.
Now that Zach has to make reports to other town officials. So I think you need to make it clear that the ZBA does not require a report. Is that a fair statement?
I think we're just removing this condition and letting the other report stand. This was an additional report that was going to us as well as other town officials. He still has to make other reports to other town officials. And we're just, we're just getting rid of this condition altogether.
Okay, okay. Hearing it differently.
Yeah. All right, so I need a vote on, on the, the amendment of condition one.
I, I'm, I'm deeply concerned about, I, I know there's some sort of miscommunication here, but I'm deeply concerned about the wording of that motion. And, because what I read in the, in the other amendment is not that. Um, I'd love to just show you all right now, or we can, maybe you can just continue this because that's not, that's not what I, that's not the outcome I want.
I would like to see it. I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure Sharon's accurate. If you can show it to us, let's.
Okay, show it.
What are we being shown exactly?
What, what we're being shown is what Zach thinks the special permit says for somebody else, which I really resent because that isn't.
It's the amendment to their special permit and it's on the screen here. I mean, we could just.
Notice that it says the board approval allows the flexibility to establish hours between eight AM and eight PM. It's the same?
Yeah, sounds right to me.
That's what we authorized, eight AM to eight PM. We did not take away their condition.
The removal of condition one.
Yeah, and it says, with, for removal of condition one allows the applicant the flexibility to establish hours of operation between eight AM and eight PM. And nine PM.
Okay, so that's the exact wording that you read?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I apologize. It's, it's not, just, it's just very.
It allows the applicant flexibility to establish hours of operation between eight AM and eight, nine PM, eight PM. It doesn't mean you have to open every morning at eight o'clock. But it does, it ends at nine, at eight rather, sorry.
Okay, so just one more question. I know I'm beating it at heart and I know I'm a little, that I'm testing patience, but thi- this is going to be worded the same way. You're not replacing a condition. You're just removing the condition to allow me the flexibility.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no other condition? It's just the word of removal here that's getting me concerned.
You're allowed to operate between eight AM and eight PM.
So a, a no vote on this would be to maintain the condition one as it is. And a yes vote would be to change it to unlimited, you know, twenty-four seven.
No.
No, no, eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Well, so, so what, what's the difference between a, a yes and a no vote on condition one?
A yes vote allows them to go between eight and eight and no vote keeps them with the same conditions, which are ten to eight.
Ah, okay, okay, so.
Can I make, can I make a, a request to just, if you're going to amend it, just amend it by changing ten, the, the, the number ten to the number eight? And leaving the other one as is?
What, what do you mean?
So you, you, I, so you want to say the condition is amended to state that you're allowed to operate between the hours of eight AM and eight PM?
And then there's a whole thing about I can process people in line and things like that.
Yeah. So you want that.
Almost like, I feel like I'm almost, you know, going backwards if we make this amendment.
So you want us to change the out, the starting hours and that's it?
Well, that seems to be all, yeah, because you're, you're, you're adding, it seems like we're adding restrictions the way it's worded right now. On, on the closing hours.
Oh, you want that part of it in there about provided that no customers should be in line and so forth. I had that in there. I thought you wanted it out. So, all right, the adult use marijuana should be permitted to operate between the hours of eight AM and eight PM for adult use marijuana retailer, provided that any customers in line at eight PM are able to be served, but no new customers will be admitted after eight PM.
I'm reluctantly okay with that.
Okay, you, you don't want to change, uh, you, you want it to be ten AM to eight PM or do you want it to be eight AM to eight PM?
He wants it eight AM to eight.
I want it, I want it gone, but.
He wants it eight AM to eight PM and he's going to live with that.
Okay, so, so an I vote confirms that, eight, eight AM to eight PM.
Right, right. Okay, so if you could get your screen away, Zach, then I could actually see
Sorry about that.
The, the, uh, board to pull them. So on amendment, on the change in amendment one, a no vote keeps the, a no vote keeps it as it is, a yes vote allows this to um, operate between eight AM and eight, eight PM. Will?
Hi.
Trevor? Uh, Mick?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Okay, on the second one, um, a yes vote um, allows the removal of condition five and no vote keeps condition five as it is. Will?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Mick?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
And Al?
Hi.
Okay, so that's what you got. You got rid of the, uh, of condition five and the amendment to condition one.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry for the contention. I'm just, just a sensitive subject, so I appreciate your standing.
Sure. Hi.
All right, thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay. Twenty-two oh eight, Albie, eighty-five Hiller Avenue, map thirty, parcel seven, seventy-six. Request for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaws six point one point five B to add a family room with a deck system and basement under an existing non-conforming structure within the setbacks. The board will be Will. The word will be Will, Trevor, Manny, Mick, and Jan.
So, good evening, um, my name is Gene Gustaf, Gene Bowden, and I am, I almost gave you my first maiden name after the marijuana thing. I'm sorry.
But were you? Were you smoking it while we were?
No, I don't believe in it, how's that sound? Anyway, sorry, anyway. I am here to represent Mr. Alby, Steve Alby, he is on here, and I also have Betsy Lawton, who's the designer, in case anyone has questions, and. I think maybe someone else, but I'm not sure, um, from our office. But, um, Mr. And Mrs. Alby have a lovely home that has been in their family since, I think it's nineteen fifty four.
Fifty four.
Fifty fifty four or sixty four?
Sixty four.
Sixty four, well, and um, it's been their summer home. And um, the the original subdivision was all divided up in the eighteen late eighteen hundreds and. At one point, they were tiny little lots, and now they're one parcel, and he. Um, around nineteen ninety three, I think I wrote all this up, that they built the his parents built. Another dwelling on the property and Mr. And Mrs. Alby are now moving there as year round, and they would like to. Expand the property and make a family room and a deck. And they're somewhat, you know, a little closer to that side setback, which but sort of a wooded area of unpaved road. So I I want, you know, and I'm hoping that you will approve this because. They really do want to move here and have a nice piece of property to live in year round now.
Chris, did we get any letters on this one?
No.
Okay, all right, so, all right, I'm gonna start with Mick.
Uh, no questions right now.
Okay, um, Trevor.
Well, I uh, I'm trying to understand how we got, how this property got to be in the in the condition that's in now. If you look at the site plan, there's two. The two structures are labeled the homeport, which is the one that we're actively discussing tonight, and then the other one's called the pioneer. It appears that the pioneer building was built nineteen oh nineteen twenty.
Right.
The homeport building was built in nineteen ninety two, and what I can't understand is how in nineteen ninety two, when we had established zoning. How a second dwelling was allowed to be built on the property.
Well, yeah, I actually did quite a bit of research, and no one could find any type of filing, and it was allowed, and he was given a building permit with his parents and. And there it is, I I don't know, I mean, I did do, I went back to eighteen ninety, and I didn't see any filings for that, and it. Uh, and they hooked up to a septic and um. The other building is quite small, and I don't believe it's used that often, and it was there when the parents bought it. When after, you know, it was part of, there were four and a five and a half lots that made up this particular parcel.
Right, I think the cottage is used now mostly as a guest house. Prior to that, we, the whole family stayed there for whatever part of the summer we happened to be up here. Um, but I don't have any insight into what happened, uh, why we have two dwellings on here. I I know, I talked to, um, I believe it was Victor a month ago, and he said that we had. Gone through and gotten permits back in the nineties when this was done. But I I don't know, this is all kind of new to me that there there's an issue. As far as having two two houses.
And I think that Christine and I spoke about that, and she said she would even look into it, and I can't find anything that's reported. So obviously, it was legally built there, or they wouldn't have allowed it. Whatever was going on in nineteen ninety three, they were able to build it. And it's now their home, which I think it's nice to have people come here and live year round who've been here since the fifth sixties or whatever. And it it's very secluded back there too, so.
Trevor, did you have more questions, or you wanna?
Um.
Hold them from it?
Yeah, I mean, I I I don't have any other comments, I mean. I I think it's a. I I don't know, I'd like to know how it how it got, I mean, nineteen ninety two wasn't that long ago. Uh, you know, and certainly we had zoning at that time, so I. It boggles me how that how it was how it was built. And then, well, that notwithstanding, you know, it is getting really close to the setback. Two two point three feet away, and granted, it's a paper road on the side, but um, that's really close. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Manny.
I have the same problems with this that Trevor has. I think they can do a better job of keeping it away from the setback than what they've done. And um.
Uh, would you mind clarifying, I I mean, I I'm, we've been trying to figure out the best way to do this.
Right.
And I don't think there is another way without having to go through a bathroom or bedrooms or. You know, redo the kitchen, re re reconfigure the kitchen. Um, there's really only one way we can go, or else come out over the. Dirt road that goes through our property that all our neighbors use to access.
Right. I think we've tried to look for other alternatives, but it's, you know, and this is more the deck that's out there, but they do need that as for to get out there, stairs.
Hey, I'm a little. Am I part of this, sorry?
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry, I'm doing, I don't, my laptop is dead, I gotta apologize.
Oh, there's Gary, okay.
Hi, guys, I started to get a little late, and so I'm just listening in here, and I was listening to the encroachment issues.
And I'm, excuse me, I'm not sure who you are.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, I you need to state who you are for this for this hearing.
That's what I'm saying, I'm the contractor of record.
Okay.
Like, can you?
Can you state that name again a lot clearer? Yeah.
Ari, Justinson.
I still didn't hear him.
He's from Capizzi Home Improvement, he's the contractor who. The letter was written to from Vic Victor referring us to zoning.
Okay, um, where was I? Nick.
Yeah, I have the the same concerns as Trevor and Manny, I just think it it's very, very close to the lot line. And I just, I just think it's too big.
Jan.
I would agree with my other board members, I was also looking for a couple of other facts. And maybe I missed the first one, I I was looking for the square footage of the proposed deck, and somehow I could not find that, I don't.
It's ten by sixteen, I think I on my summary of reasoning, I might have forgotten, you know, I did it.
The deck is ten by sixteen?
Right, twelve by sixteen.
I'm sorry.
Deck wraps around.
Right, well, I'm just thinking, it is, it is a wrap, it is a wraparound deck, yes.
Yeah, so I was looking for that square footage, and also, and someone of my fellow board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but. When I'm looking at the setback of the proposed addition. I'm sorry, of the existing addition, it says thirteen point eight three feet, but that's the corner of the house, and if I'm not incorrect. Those steps on the existing landing are also considered an intrusion into the setback, so I was looking for that figure, and that's not given. So really, that unless I'm wrong about the steps being included in the intrusion to the setback. You're intruding more into the setback than thirteen point eight three feet. So I was looking for that.
I think that's the exist, I think that's the existing um, house is thirteen.
That's, I'm looking for that, no, but it's not, because you have steps.
Right.
On the existing landing that stick out farther into the setback than the corner of that house. Steps count, right?
The steps, the steps are actually right, the existing steps are actually right along the side of the house. Um, so the it it looks like they're a few feet out. But they're actually right along the the side of the house, the ones that go back towards the back of the house. So it it is probably still slightly.
It looks to be quite a bit more, but anyway, we, I was looking for that figure, and also, this is a private road, Highland Street, do we have any idea how it's owned, who owns it? I mean, does, does the applicant?
You're talking about How Howland Street?
Yeah, no, Highland, Highland.
Highland, I'm sorry, um, I think if you look at that whole subdivision, there seems to be streets all the way around, and lots and lots of them are not paved.
It's, I understand, I'm wondering how it's owned, it's a, it says private, but I'm wondering who own, I mean.
So my understanding, and I I'm not positive this is true, but my understanding is that we control the kind of the twenty feet that are on our side of it, and then the the people on the other side. Control the other twenty, and then that's kind of unique to Taylor Hill, the area that we're on. I'm not certain, but that is something that I was told by someone who lives in town.
So then my other question, I mean, we'd have to know that for sure, my other question to my fellow board members would be. If the applicant. Owns halfway into the street along his property, does that affect our opinion?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, I have these here.
Well.
Yeah, I I went out and I walked this property, and in one sense, I agree with my fellow board members that it is getting awful close to the boundary line. However, setbacks, yeah, I, you know, when I look at setbacks, you say, well, what were setbacks designed to do? And setbacks were designed so people didn't build too close to the line on one side, so you didn't have people. Right next to each other, so look at this case here, we got, yeah, let's say we're two feet, but we're also forty feet. To the other side of the road, that's forty two feet, and then we're probably seventy five or a hundred feet to the next house. So there, I I don't, I don't see the problem with it, I know some of my board members say, well, it's too close, but I'd ask them to, if they could, tell me. I mean, because part of the the findings is that. You know, that the 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 benefits derived from the. Construction, the benefit to the applicant outweigh any adverse effects. And I'd like to hear from fellow board members, what what is the ad adverse effects of grant uh uh of granting this? And I would say there's none, but maybe someone out there has a lot more more. Wisdom than than do I, because I think we need to look at this as not not just how close it is. But what are the adverse effects by us waving the sideline? And and I don't, I don't see any, but if someone else does, I'd like them to, if they would, they don't mind, express what they are.
Oh, who wants to, Al, I haven't heard from you yet.
I think Will made a pretty persuasive case, um, I I think if it's true that. It the lot de facto extends twenty feet to that paper road. It's really not an issue, but it it would be nice to know, and perhaps counsel can tell us, you know. If 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 that is a fact, because.
I can say, Al, I can tell you that it that that whoever said, whatever that person said, that's correct, that that a homeowner owns. Twenty feet or half of the road that its property line that butts on a.
Well, then then I don't think there's an issue, yeah, I agree with Will then.
Half, well, forty, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty, yeah, Andy, what all the thoughts do you have on this one?
Now, I I. I mean, obviously, it's two point three feet from the property line, but I went out there and looked at it, you were with me, and I do, you know, I don't, I don't really see a problem with this.
Okay, who haven't I been to, Rtha?
That's a wooded area, if no, nothing on the other side, really, uh, to. Make a difference, uh, it seems to be reasonable to allow this.
And who else have I not been to? Mick?
You've been to me.
Yep.
I think, Madam Chairperson, there's a lady has her hand up there, Miss Carol Nelson.
Yes, I'm the owner of ninety five Hiller Avenue, Carol Nelson, um, I'm in a butter on the other side. Uh, I have no objection at all to the expansion of the property.
The question I have on this one is, you know. Are we allowed to expand the nonconformity? Of a property when it's in violation of the two houses on one lot? And I just don't know. Yep, well.
I believe there's a section of our zoning ordinance. That says if you have a zoning violation that's been going on for ten years, it's no longer a zoning violation.
Right, right, I there is, my only question to you is, my question to you.
Do this as a compliant law.
Okay, um, no, my question wasn't that, you know, that we had any authority to say tear down one of the plot properties. My question was, can you extend? The nonconformity of something, it's obviously it's grandfathered, so it's fine for it, but do we? Do we have the authority to extend and make it worse?
We do all the time, I mean, that's when everyone asks for a further extension into the setback, that that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
I mean. The follow up on this, um. Is it more detrimental to whom, I mean, I don't see who it's more detrimental to.
Yeah, I'll just throw in one last comment, then I'll keep my mouth shut. I think that if we're gonna turn something down because something's more detrimental, we should put something in in the record as to just what that detrimental effect is.
Sure.
And not just say it as a blanket statement, I think that's very unfair to the applicant. So if someone's gonna, if we're gonna turn it down for for that, we should say exactly what that detriment is, what the danger is, what we've done.
Anyone else? Want to weigh in on this one? Did we get an answer about the square footage of the deck?
Nope.
I can, I can answer that.
Good.
The total square footage, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the total square footage of the deck is um, two hundred and twenty four square feet.
Right, okay. Thank you. Okay. There is no other discussion, do you want to move to findings?
Um, Sharon, one other thing.
Yes.
We don't really know what the intrusion is on the existing, because we only have the corner of the house, not where the steps, so what are we gonna do about that?
In terms of findings. Okay, yeah, the existing nonconformities.
So the steps are three feet from the setback. Um, that three is to the steps, no, 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 on the existing steps, not the proposed, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the existing steps, which I believe is somewhere else, right now, it looks like there's a thirteen point eight three. Yeah, on the existing steps, which I believe is somewhere else, right now, it looks like there's a thirteen point eight three.
From the corner.
From the corner. And we're not sure what the. Intrusion into the side back.
Well, the existing stairs and are gonna be torn down in order to do that.
It's just part of the findings. It's a fact that we put in, like, what is the exact intrusion? And the intrusion isn't thirteen point eight three. It's, it's more than that. I mean, well, it's less than that, because the steps extend further than that into the.
So, so Jan, this is, this is Steve Alby. I'm actually looking at. A plot plan. From, it's an older one. I think it's from twenty-ten. We did to get our septic up to date. Based on this, it looks like the, the edge of the stairs is further away from the corner. Than the corner of the house. The way it's set, because it doesn't go all the way back. And they're right up against the house in reality, that whereas the. The plot plan that was given showed them. Out away from the house a few feet.
Sharon, you decide what we want to do, because that's not at all what it looks like on here, but what do you want to do about those findings?
I think we will say thirteen point eight three. We've got on a plan, right?
As long as, yeah, as long as we agree what goes in the findings, that's all.
All right, then I need a motion to move to findings. Okay, Dan moves it and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Will seconds it, all right. Twenty-eight, twenty-two oh eight, Alby, fifty-eight five Heller Avenue, map thirty. Parcel seventy-six, request for special permit under wealth fleet zoning by law six point one point five B to add a family room addition with deck system. And basement under an existing nonconforming structure within the setbacks. One, this is an application for a special permit under wealth fleet zoning bylaws. To allow for three hundred and twenty square foot family room addition with basement and a two hundred and twenty-four square foot deck system. Hereby referred to as the addition that will increase the intrusion into the side, a side setback of a lawfully pre-existing nonconforming. Single-family dwelling. The dwelling was built in nineteen ninety-two, according to the assessor's office, is entitled to treatment as a lawfully pre-existing nonconforming. Structure, having been in, in existence for at least ten years as provided for in wealth fleet zoning by law eight point two point two. The lot is lawfully pre-existing nonconforming, having been created in nineteen fifty. By the combining of small, multiple small lots that were originally created in an eighteen ninety subdivision plan of seashore lots. The zoning board of appeals hereby referred to as the board has received and reviewed the plans and drawings pertaining to the project, all of which are. In the file. The board has made a site inspection of the subject lot. The dwelling is a two-story, four-room, eight hundred and ninety-six square foot raised ranch residential structure with a drive under two-car garage. And a deck located on, on a nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty square foot nonconforming lot in the residential R-one zoning district. A second seven, seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot dwelling built in nineteen twenty, according to the assessor's office. A deck and a four hundred and eighty square foot detached garage are also located on the lot. The existing nonconformities regarding the structure are intrusion into the rear setback. Eleven point oh four feet where thirty feet are required, intrusion into the side setback to the west, thirteen point eight three. Feet with twenty-five feet are required, more than one dwelling on a lot and an undersized lot nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty square feet. Where thirty thousand square feet are required. The applicable provisions for this application under wealth fleet zoning by law are sections three point two, district objectives four point one five. Not more than one dwelling may be erected on a lot. Five point four point one minimum lot requirements, five point four point two minimum yard requirements. Six point one point five point one B alteration of a nonconforming single-family residential structure. That increases the nonconforming nature of the structure. Eight point two point two nonconforming structures, ten years or older, and eight point four point two special permits. At the furthest point of the proposed addition, the intrusion into the side setback will increase to two point. Three feet from the property line. This intrusion faces an unimproved wooded private road that is not in use. There will be a volumetric increase. The addition will increase the building coverage to twelve point four percent, fifteen percent coverage is allowed. There will be no change or increase in use. There was one appearance in support of the application. There were no appearances of correspondence in opposition to the application. There were no objections from the butters. The wealth fleet zoning by law three point two, board finds that the use conforms with the objectives of the R-one district as stated in wealth fleet zoning by law. Three point two, wealth fleet zoning by law six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the addition will not be substantially more detrimental. To the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And wealth fleet zoning by law eight point four point two, the board finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the addition will outweigh any adverse effects. On the town and the vicinity, that the addition is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the construction of the addition. That the addition will not contribute to environmental damage, that the roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the addition. That the addition will not affect diversity of services or housing opportunities or have seasonal consequences. And that there will be no adverse effect on scenic views, existing parking areas or traditional public access to or along the shoreline. That's what I have. Thank you, Jan.
And I do have a, I could hold it up, I guess, and show you the older plot plan and it shows where the stairs are.
You're fine. Everyone.
Manny will move the findings and I need a second.
A second.
Second, who seconded? You can't, you're not on that board. All right, Jan seconds it. All in favor, Will? Trevor? Manny? Nick? And Jan? Okay, and then I need a motion to grant the special permit. And I need a second. Any seconds? All in favor, Will? Trevor? Manny? Nick? And Jan? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And special thanks to Christine Bates for helping me and giving me the encouragement to write up all that.
Thank you, everybody.
She's a keeper. All right, I think you have minutes, right? Chris?
I don't have them right in front of me.
But I think you sent them out, didn't you?
Four fourteen, they were.
Four fourteen.
Because you were at church, yes.
Yes, I was at church on four fourteen. So I need someone to move the minutes and someone.
I'll move the minutes.
Okay, and I need a second. Now, all in favor, Al? Will? Nick? Manny? Jan? Sharon, I. Andy? Rita? Trevor? Okay, all right. I think, I don't think there's any other business.
Excuse me, Sharon? Would have been possi- possible for me to see what the findings are with the. With Zach's application. I'd just like to look at that. I know it's.
The old, the old findings?
The new ones.
The amendments?
Correct, whatever findings, whatever we.
Whatever we did tonight, you mean? I mean, I can also send you the whole. Other one, you know, that we, the first permit we granted. He's been granted a permit and two amendment, two, he's been here back twice for amendments.
Whenever we, whenever we decide it tonight, if there's, I assume that's in writing. I'd like to look at it. Is there any?
It'll be in draft form. I'll send you.
I, I finished, I cleaned them up and sent them to Chris tonight. I can certainly send that one to you.
Because it's already been voted on.
Sharon, who's sending, are you gonna send these findings to?
Yeah, I'll send them. I added the numbers. I'll send them to Chris, yeah, so. And the, just upcoming events, the. We, we're gonna hear the appeal of the cease and desist from Great, Great White on May twelfth. And then, beginning at the end, the second meeting in June, I believe, we're gonna start hearing the forty B. For Lawrence Road. They wanted to know if we wanted to meet every week and I respectfully declined. Meeting every week in July, so. We're not going to meet every week, but we will. We will probably be hearing that at every meeting until the whole thing is sorted out. It won't be the only case, but. So we'll have some long meetings. And I don't know at that point if those are gonna be in-person meetings or if there, those are gonna be. The, still Zoom meetings. So stay, stay tuned. So I think that's all, those are the only things. Oh, no, I should tell you two other things. There was a decision on the Ruspoli Eiffel Tower. And it's, they, they found, the court, the court found that it was in fact an art installation and not a sign. So they disagreed with us on that, but they found that it could not be placed in the setbacks. So they agreed with us on the placement of the sign. So, split decision. And.
I'm gonna get my big oyster painting out now.
Right, as long as you keep, you pay attention to the setbacks.
A question, Sharon? Is it gonna be put on the property?
It can. I agreed for you and. Attorney Zender agreed for them that we would not appeal. So they can't put it where they wanted to put it. I doubt that they want to put it in the parking lot.
They're gonna have a problem with conscom, because that's in the buffer.
Right, and they, and they can't really put it in the, in the wetland behind the property. So I, I would say probably not on the property.
Okay, interesting.
So, so that's that court case on the Habitat, Old Kings Highway case. That has gone to the judge and we expect a decision. In another week or so. Oh, slowly but surely, our lawsuits work their way through the. Hey, it doesn't even, I mean, paint hollow went, what, twenty? So those are my bits of news.
All good. So I guess now we need a motion to adjourn?
We do indeed, yes. Okay, I need a second. All right, all in favor, Al? Yeah, we can just say hi. Thank you. You're all worked very hard. Okay, so Chris, I will get these over to you. I will clean them up and I will send the, I will send, you can stop the recording.